Well, he's signaling that we're good to go, but we're down a guy.
Yeah.
That we have narrowed our search for a city manager. Yep?
Are they watching just the fact that they were ready or that we were in fact at 6:50?
She was signaling that we were going, so, or that we were on.
I just said he was ready.
He gives us one of these to indicate.
I understand. My concern is that we absolutely not began until
Okay.
the appointed time, because the whole concept is that someone who may have stepped out in anticipation of that would not return until that time. So, I'm sorry to
No, very good. Apologize.
interrupt, but that would be the potential problem if we
We suffer from the varying clocks around here.
Yeah, that's, I realize that's, that's the cause of the problem.
But then we have a minute to wait.
Sorry, I was going by the thumbs up and not the clock, so there you go.
Do you think we're there?
Yep.
Okay. Commissions, please to announce that we've narrowed our search for a city manager to two excellent prospects, and we'd like to report out our next steps. But let me first offer my thanks to those that applied for the position and saw promise and professional advancement here in Salina. I can honestly say that the final group from whom we have now narrowed to two were all qualified, and any one of them would have been capable and successful as our selection. Commissioners don't have to routinely fill this position. All of us as commissioners were new to this task, but I think with the help of our consultant Art Davis, we have fully explored the presentations of the applicants and enjoyed our face-to-face interviews with each. Let me offer my personal observation that city managers must all be particularly bright and possess considerable communication skills and be project-oriented. That truly must be a calling, and I have a new appreciation for the fishbowl that city managers and their families live in and the multi-dimensional relationships they maintain as they attempt to engage their city council above them, their organizational relationships below them, and the public all around them. Let me express our thanks as a commission to Art Davis and the firm of Spring Speed Waters for help to direct us. I'm pleased to announce that our two finalists are Mr. Jeff Dingman, Assistant City Manager for the city of, it's slipping my mind.
Fort Smith, Arkansas.
Fort Smith, Arkansas. Thank you very much. And Mr. Mike Schrag, our Salina City Interim Manager. Congratulations to both of these gentlemen. Commissioners, I propose we agree to extend an announcement tonight, an invitation to the Salina community to meet these two finalists, and we have a discussion ahead of us to decide how to entertain that.
I would propose, I think it would be lovely if we could have something like a public meet-and-greet, a public reception, in a venue maybe like the Tony's Pizza Event Center of an afternoon into evening, so that we could get people as they're coming home from work or something.
That's the way I've had it expressed to me by other people, something an hour and a half, hour, couple hours, anyway.
By 30 to 7 or something like that, I think would be appropriate.
I think the public would like to hear from the candidates, so I think it would be in order to ask them to make some type of presentation to the public as part of the, part of the meet-and-greet.
Yeah. And I'm just, I'm just spitballing here, but maybe, but give the candidates a specified amount of time, like five minutes to introduce themselves, and if their families are able to be in attendance, and just talk a little bit about why they chose to be city managers and why they chose to apply for the Salina job. And then maybe we could go into some specific questions for each of them. We could, I mean, whether that's something that's, that we allow the public to submit their questions, and we narrow those down, but at any rate, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Well, I'd suggest the questions be solicited ahead of time.
Exa, oh, exactly, yeah, exactly.
So that we can eliminate duplicates and, and probably not focus on necessarily current operational issues in the city or topic-specific, but ask questions about their approach, management style. You don't want to censor questions, but, but I'm not sure who in the city would receive the questions in human re-
I know we, I would either say Natalie, or I think we have, who's the H, or the?
Or Art Davis, or no?
I would have, whoever receives them, I think they want to come to us, and then we'll decide, because I think it's only fair that each candidate gets the same question, much like we did in the interviewing process. I would say two to three questions, and we might want to announce at what time the candidates will, will speak, and at what time they want to, questions will be answered. And that way, the public will get a little bit, and so will we get a little bit of an idea of how they answer questions in a, in a public format.
Do you think it might be a good idea to give the finalists the questions ahead of time and let them comment or reflect on them? I see us asking, if we're asking individual questions back and forth, the need to have them go out of the room.
I would have each candidate, I would have each candidate leave the room while the other one's talking and answering questions. I think that would be
Think we can manage that?
I think we can probably handle that. Somebody can.
There's, there's five of us and only two of them, okay?
So do we want to go ahead and set, set the date?
I believe Natalie left, but from what I understand, Thursday, December 20th, was an open date, and I would suggest we do that between 5:30 and 7:00. I think that's good. We can catch people on their way home, and maybe at 6:15 or something is when we'd have the candidates perhaps make their statements.
Right. Like we could have Candidate A come out, give his statement, respond to the questions, and then we could bring Candidate B out.
Right.
Or Candidate S and Candidate D.
I guess I'll ask this question to our television technician in the room. Is this something that can be televised? Live? It is? Thank you.
There you go. Very good.
Would it be sociable to ask the bicentennial center, or the two-pack center, to provide us some coffee and
I think.
juice, something like the river presentation was done? And then we'd need to notice that up for all of, I assume all of the commissioners would want to be there. It looks like a good opportunity for us to see the applicants, the candidates on their feet and interacting with the public, so.
Question, oh, was I, thank, that was going to be part of my question, and if you don't mind kind of talking through that period of time, what I'm trying to assess is I'm, I'm thinking part of this may be actually a meeting of yours, if I'm understanding that you all would be there, you would hear the candidates make the presentation that you're speaking of. I don't know who, well, it sounds like some details on the handling of the questions need to be worked, worked out. The mention was made of 5:30, but then moving to 6:15 for the comments.
I just threw that out there. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what the full matter is.
Yeah, I understood that fully, and that's the only reason. I think we probably need to go through this, not minute by minute, but in some degree of detail, and maybe we could just talk through what all you think will happen in that, what are we thinking, hour and a half period of time. You'll, how will that begin? Will that begin with the candidates' presentation?
I think that might be best, in one sense, that if they are involved in the meet-and-greet, we might have a little bit of trouble extracting them from the crowd, so if we put the time as 5:30, then possibly the statements begin at 5:45, allow everybody a chance to get into the room. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, closing out with further time for meet-and-greet, or would you be finished when they are finished?
I'll be odd, man. I was thinking have them in the room for 15 to 30 minutes, just to break the ice, let them relax, and then extract them at about 5:55.
I guess there's five of us.
Yeah.
And, and it might be easier, and if anyone's watching TV to know that, you know, a straight-up hour, like 6 o'clock would be when the statements would occur, and then, because it may be
I think they like the round hour thing of it.
Okay. And what will you all be doing in that 30 minutes?
Not talking to one another.
Well, and that's, that's the thing, I'm trying to make sure we're all having common expectations. It strikes me that we, we have a potential, I mean, leading up, I don't, you wouldn't need to be in formal session as long as you all are not talking to the candidates and not talking to each other. Reason I say that, if, the question is whether you are in session or not, and at what stages of this event. Obviously, you all will be there, you all are hearing what is said by the candidates. What I'm trying to work through with you all, and to be sure we have common expectations, is, is there actually a portion of this event where you are not in formal session, and as long as you are not communicating one with the other, and the not speaking with the candidates is only a recommendation. I don't know that that's a matter of law, but just in terms of what
Well, I think it'd be rude if we didn't greet them in some way, you know, at least be able to, you know, give them a proper welcome.
Sure. I understand that. I understand that part.
And it would be a good time for us to actually meet and greet our own constituents?
Well, certainly. Certainly. And that's what I'm trying to distinguish. Do we need to have you in session for the presentations and the questions?
I would hope not, because that would require us to have pledge of allegiance, a roll call, all of those things that go with the regular meeting.
Okay.
That would seem a little odd in that context to me, but we'd do whatever's required.
We can go in the room the night before, stake out our territory. We'll, we'll each stay in a particular zone.
Well, and that is, I mean, that's the, that is the concern, whether perceived or not, as if there is communication among you all. And if it's, I'm sorry to take the fun out of this bit, but it's the type of thing I think I'm supposed to think about. And if that's the basis of the, the full event, then I don't know that we need to take you into a meeting as such. If you all are comfortable just being If you all are comfortable just being there and everybody understands and, and very possible even an announcement to that effect, that you're here in that, in that role, but that you understand that it is not to be an interactive scenario for you as a commission among yourselves. That will leave you free to, as you say, engage the candidates, engage your constituents and, and have whatever conversation you want to have with anyone other than among yourselves.
So the law says we can't engage the candidates?
Well, no, I was concerned about whether, you know, I think as long as you all are individually having those conversations, that's fine.
Okay.
That, that's what, it's kind of, it's just a, are we in, are we out? And if, and if the thought is that we are not in a meeting, then we just need to make sure that there's not any interactive communication among you all. And as long as that occurs, I think, I think we'll be fine. So if, if that's-
You think we can handle that?
If that works, then, you know, we can do whatever you wish, whenever you wish otherwise.
We may look to you and Natalie to be the sort of master of ceremonies then.
Well, that, that would be brief, just to make sure that folks know that we're not in a meeting and that you are not interacting and that we're in as, I assume as relaxed a situation as, as we can create in that circumstance. So that, that makes that easier and I don't need to really suggest anything further by way of structure if that's, if that works for you all.
Yep.
Other thoughts?
I was just going to ask, do we need to take action to authorize Natalie to go ahead and release a press, release a press release?
He's going to release it no matter what. He's already got it.
Yeah.
And include the information about the public meet and greet on Thursday, December
20th from 5:30 to 7:00 with the candidates making presentations at 6:00. Is that, was that?
And an invitation for the public to submit questions?
And then invitation for the public to submit questions to, what does that look like? Does that look like Natalie? Does that look like?
Director of Human Resources, I would think.
Okay, and direct questions to Natalie Fisher and I think we should put-
Or community engagement.
Right, but I think we need to put a deadline on it so that, say, like at Monday's meeting, if we wanted to review the questions, I don't know exactly what that, what that looks like, but I, we, we're going to need to have some sort of communication that's not out here, otherwise there's no point in discretion. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't put a deadline of it of, you know, like noon on Monday, the 17th?
I would agree with, with that and I would probably suggest they pass through Art Davis' hands for vetting as to whether they're appropriate or not. There are some things that can't be asked, so.
Is that, is that deadline, you all were hoping to discuss those next Monday?
Next Monday?
If Art is to, do we need to give him a little more time?
Yeah, I think that's about our only opportunity to get to that.
Yeah, that would be.
So, yeah, discuss them on Monday.
I was only concerned about whether noon on Monday would allow Art's review prior to your discussion. I suppose we could try to pre-arrange that with him, but if that's helpful.
And he would probably need just to X out any, any appropriate questions.
Okay, we'll try to get, Natalie will get him lined up to be in a position to do that.
So we think we've covered that event? Then we, we need another time to actually decide, could we schedule a, a meeting the next morning at 8:00, early? Early'd be best for me.
8:00'd be best for me.
On Friday?
Friday.
That's fine.
That works. Do we need motions to these effects?
That would be best, I think, if you're ready to go on that.
You take the first one.
Before we get to those motions, would you like to address us, Ms. Ratzle?
Yes, thank you. Joan Ratzle, Salina. I was in one of the focus groups that met with the consultant and I was just going to ask any of these questions, will you be soliciting those from the members of the various focus groups?
Not as focus groups, but if individuals want to submit their questions.
I mean, from individuals in the focus groups.
I would say because of the, the nature of the event, is there going to be limited questions?
Sure, sure, yes. So will those people who participated in those focus groups get one of those emails like we did when, you know, when we were invited to submit a question to whoever is going to them?
We could probably manage that, couldn't we? Don't we have a, we have that list, don't we?
Yeah, I think we have a spreadsheet of everybody who attended with their email address.
I would expect that between, yeah, certainly with, I can speak with Natalie about that and between Natalie, Rachel and Holly, I'm sure that can be accomplished.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
But probably the realistic thing is, probably the realistic thing is you'll come and you'll be able to ask those questions personally, have them in the meet and greet.
Thank you.
That's true.
Prior to the, you putting this out, will, will you be posting their bios on your social media and in the journal and?
I think as quickly as possible and we have one here prepared that's brief, but we intend to give it to Mr. Beetz here tonight and I guess it may have to wait till tomorrow morning to get to our social media person, but yes.
Okay. I, I would suggest, I, I heard you say that you were talking about televising it. Is, if there was some way that you could do a live stream also, because, like on Facebook Live or whatever the 100,000 things my grandkids do, but that would be my suggestion because, you know, a lot of people, that's how they're getting their news now, so.
I don't know if all parts of this meet and greet, it'd be practical to do that, but I would think certainly when the, the applicants are giving their statements that we could ask Rachel to livestream Facebook app.
Yes, sir.
Portion of it.
That's what I meant. Thank you.
We could, we could look into that with, with Rachel.
Daniel Echoff, 2664 Highland. One thing I just have as a request for you guys evaluating going forward is that hopefully you could release some kind of public rubric on what you will be evaluating candidates on as a matter of fairness to both candidates. Transparency to go a long way as far as one candidate having to travel and making sure the decision's not made and then also from Mr. Skreg's perspective of everyone already automatically assuming that he has that as a lock, show that he is the strongest candidate in those areas. Thank you.
John Blanchard, 1117 State. Those are really great points that, that Daniel brought up. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking my recommendation to make this public. I think it really shows a lot that you're willing to-
It really wasn't your recommendation. We discussed that among ourselves.
Are you, I'm sorry, you interrupted me. What did you say?
It wasn't at your recommendation. We had discussed that before, that we were wanting to open it up to the public at some point, so.
I sent you the email on Thursday, so we can, we can, but I appreciate that, that you did take the recommendations of the public to make it public because it was not laid out in the, in the plan that you had laid out before, so. But I was out of the room. Did, did, was Mr. Dingman notified prior to you coming out and letting everybody know who was, who the finalists were?
Yes.
Okay, and there is no, but there was no press release provided? Like they're, we're going to have to put one together and, and do all this?
Mr. Dingman informed me, I mean, Mr. Davis informed me that the candidates were able to, unwilling to come and appear. We, we first had to go through the, the motions of contacting them and tell them they were finalists and, and seeing if they were still in position and whether they wanted to come and interview, so that's what the weight was for this meeting.
And I, I appreciate that. Can you tell us, can you, can you tell the public how many semifinalists you interviewed on Thursday? How many total candidates, semifinalists, did you interview? Any of you can answer.
Four.
Four?
Uh huh.
Most communities, and I think you saw it, most, most communities would choose between five. I'm curious if, if, for whatever reason, Mr. Dingman gets a raise from his current employer and chooses to bow out, are you going to redo the sys, redo your search or are you going to hire Mr. Skreg by default?
I think we would discuss that at our meeting after the open house.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
One other matter, clarification, am I correct? Ms. Fisher mentioned as earlier that I, am I correct that they, we anticipate there being a news release that would also include this, the plan that, that we've spoken of, the combination of the bios and the, or the back, the summaries and then a summary of then the plan, if you will, for the public? So just wanted to make sure that we understood the order of events and I know she was-
And an invitation to comment for the public.
Right, right, I know.
And I think we need a motion for setting that time and date?
For a stopless quick meeting?
Of the first one and then also the second meeting, as we haven't.
Do we, do we need to formalize or codify what we're asking Natalie and, and Rachel to do as well?
Anything, I think that you can-
Make it as clear as possible?
Make sure that we have a meeting of the minds. It will be helpful. I think, the only thing I would say is we do need to be sure not to refer then to the meet and greet as a meeting. It will not be a meeting as such.
Okay, this is going to be a long one. Shandy, stop me if, if, if you need to. All right. Mayor Ryan, I would move that we establish Thursday, December 20th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the Tony's Pizza Event Center as a meet and greet for the two finalists for the city manager position, naming the candidate presentation at 6:00 and requesting Ms. Fisher to release a statement to the press that includes this information as well as requests information for, sorry, not information, requests questions from stakeholders and the public to be submitted to her no later than noon on December 17th and asking that staff make available Facebook Live for the purpose of the candidate presentation.
And then, and access television.
And, and access television.
Well done.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes 5:00. Is there a motion to set a meeting for the day after to consider choosing the candidate?
Yes, I move that we meet at 8:00 AM on Friday, December 21st, imagining in this room or place to be determined, for the purpose of discussing selection of choice for city manager. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll schedule the meeting 5:00. Other business?
We need to go into another executive session.
And then you got this one too.
Do we need the second executive session?
That is entirely up to you. It was placed there in the event that you wanted to do some, have some of that preliminary discussion. I should, I realize, considering the hour and the, given Mr. Davis's circumstances, he had not been able to advance any, he and I had spoken, he was going to provide some information that I might relate to you in that discussion as to potential terms as you begin to think in terms of the actual engagement of whomever you designate. So that can certainly, that discussion could begin this evening, it could wait until later. That's entirely up to you all.
Do you want to take it up this evening or let it percolate for a week and?
Let's let it wait.
I think we could. Take it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I, I will have some additional information by that time, I'm sure, so.
Okay, thank you. 7.6. Okay. I'm ready.
Item 7.6, resolution number 18-7644, appointing Jack Jackson to the Solid Waste Management Committee.
Sorry, I'm catching up. Staff have for, something for us?
I believe so. Should be a separate item titled 7.6.
Somewhere I go.
Ready?
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think your recent conversation about solid waste recycling, that entire topic may have sparked interest or at least jogged some memories in terms of making application to the Solid Waste Management Committee. And so had to make a little bit of a decision in terms of whether we go ahead and stick this on your agenda today or not, and my primary motivation is I certainly didn't want to preclude you from having the opportunity to act on applications that were received Sunday, this, oh, well, yesterday and today, essentially. So as a little bit of background, I know we talked in, in great detail that by way of interlocal agreement between the City of Salina and Saline County, we as the city are the designated solid waste management planning authority for Saline County and consistent with state statute, we've adopted or made provision for the membership of that committee by ordinance and I've inserted the provisions of our ordinance there in the staff report. But it's a total membership of 13. It takes seven of those 13 to constitute a quorum. Five residents of the city to be nominated by the mayor, one resident of the unincorporated area of the county to be nominated by the Board of County Commissioners, one resident of any of the third-class cities in Saline County to be nominated by a majority of the mayors of those cities, and six residents of the county at large, four of those to be nominated by the mayor and two nominated by the Board of County Commissioners. So you add all that up and you get 13. If you look at the website, it actually indicates 15 members, the reason being there's also two youth on board positions, which is an initiative the city's taken on. They're not voting members, but they are recognized as committee members. So I've attached the current roster of the committee and I, I touched on the fact that a simple majority constitutes a quorum. So the current nine members, there are currently nine member positions with four vacancies. One vacancy is the city representative that would be filling the unexpired term of Ronald Knox. Two of them are county at-large representatives and one of them is the third-class city representative. So we had no applications on file when you considered appointments in August and, and we received one on Sunday and one on Monday of this week. Mr. Jackson submitted his application on Sunday and Patrick Harrington submitted his application today. Mr. Jackson was a member of the Solid Waste Management Committee with his term ending on the 31st of, of August of this year and we do have a system to generate emails to send out to committee members as their term's expiring. So that email went out in June, June 2nd of this year notifying the appointment term was ending and, and inquiring whether he is interested in, in reapplying. An application wasn't submitted at that time by Mr. Jackson. I believe that was an oversight on his part, not reci, not recognizing that his term was expiring. So the other thing that I would point out to you is our resolution about board appointments in general. in general provides a manner and time of appointment, and it makes provision that it'll be the responsibility of the clerk's office to distribute expression of interest forms to the governing body, so that they may offer written suggestions to the mayor on appointments. Commissioners shall also be notified if any of the applicants are currently members of the board or committee, and if so are eligible for reappointment. And all appointments will be made by resolution submitted by the mayor to the full city commission for final approval at the times indicated. And then it goes on to say that the members of all citizen boards and commissions will be appointed in August of appropriate years, and then it spells out some special circumstances for the airport authority, the library board, and community corrections. So we are definitely out of the August cycle, but in light of the past conversation, the upcoming solid waste committee meeting, and the recent interest in serving on this particular committee, as well as the fact that they'll be electing officers at their meeting this week, I felt it'd probably be safer to at least get this information to you. You can choose whether you want to act on it, postpone consideration, but at least you were made aware and you weren't prevented from being able to take action. So at this time, the only available position is for a city representative filling the unexpired term of Ronald Knox through August 31st of next year. Mr. Knox resigned on April 3rd of this year. Conformist to strategic plan, there's a handful of goals there, from the city being clean, attractive and inviting, to being attractive and well-maintained with good housekeeping being evident, balancing the expectations of the community, and providing high-quality services. There's no cost associated with this action item, and I did, this all kind of played itself out late this morning, and frankly, that's why I was a little late getting to the study session. We were wrapping things up this afternoon, but I did have an opportunity to speak with Mayor Ryan and confirm his recommendation of the appointment of Mr. Jackson. Obviously, you've not received, as the rest of the commission have not received the applications, they are attached to this report, and so the options that are before you for your consideration would be adoption of the attached resolution, appointing Jack Jackson to the Solid Waste Management Committee, amending the resolution to appoint Mr. Harrington to the Solid Waste Committee, postponing consideration to a specified date, providing staff with additional direction, or you could take no action at this time, which would result in neither applicant being appointed at this time. Board and commission appointments are within the full discretion of the mayor and governing body. That's not something that staff makes recommendations on, so, and haven't provided a recommendation with this report. As far as attachments, there's a copy of the resolution that spells out the board appointment process, just, so it's there for your reference. There's also, sorry, I'm not thumbing through these very well, there's also the application, an inventory of board members and the vacancies, and then the expression of interest forms, I believe, from each of the applicants. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
So we would actually simply be filling a vacant-
Yes, the term would run through August 31st of next year.
Vacated term, okay.
And if Mr. Harrington so chose, he could apply as a representative of the county at large, correct? Or does that mean it has to be outside the city limits?
I don't know that he has to be outside the city limits, it's just who makes the initial recommendation of that appointment, so we'd have to go back through the vacancies.
Because I think there were two county at-large, or three county at-large.
Yeah, there's a, two county at-large representatives, and within that split of mayor-nominated and county commission-nominated, the mayor-nominated representative at-large are filled, the remainder are, it would need to be nominated by the county.
So if Mr. Harrington, if we proceeded with the reappointment of Mr. Jackson tonight, and Mr. Harrington were inclined to apply for that other, one of those other positions, he'd be welcome to do so. Or conversely, if we appointed Mr. Harrington and Mr. Jackson, I mean, there's, maybe not in time for the December 13th meeting, but certainly if there's an interest there going forward, there's several-
Right.
-positions open for that.
And I'll, Mr. Banksen's certainly welcome to interrupt me or correct me, but the provision as it relates to the appointments by the Board of County Commissioners is that two, it would essentially be two residents of the county at-large nominated by the Board of County Commissioners, and, and appointed by the governing body of the city. So that, that appointment will be coming back to you for ratification. At least that's the way I read it.
Yay!
Anyone from the public like to address this?
My name is Jack Jackson, City of Salina. It was my mistake that, I'm currently, well, I guess I'm currently not anything, but I was the chair. So it was my mistake, I thought somehow it ended in December, but it was fully my mistake. I didn't get the email from the city, my bad. But I would like to say something about this. I read through this, I went and spoke to Jim today, Tobish, to help me get through this process. Joan pointed out, or someone pointed out yesterday, gee, I'm sorry, you resigned from the commission. I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. But going through the system, so all appointments are in August, from reading the resolution the way I understand it, which, I understand some of that, but also, I went through, you have, the City of Salina has numerous openings on a lot of boards, and if it's only done once a year, you're gonna have openings, unless something silly like me didn't read their email, and it has to take something special. Took a lot of staff time to do this, and I really appreciate them doing it, because we are electing, and we also have things that we want to discuss on our agenda. Why aren't, I guess the question I have is, why aren't vacancies filled on the boards or commissions or advisory panels as they come about? If you have someone in the hopper instead of waiting until August, is it just because of the time it takes?
I'm having to speculate about why our past practice was that way. We'll, we'll take applications throughout the year.
Yes, sir.
If we have, you know, a deficiency where we can't seem to muster a quorum, that might rise to the level of looking at, at filling the position off-cycle.
Yes, sir.
But with the number of boards and commissions we have, we might be making appointments every couple weeks if we're not careful, so. Recognizing there's a balance there to be had between, you know, volunteer is applying, and we keep our expression of interest forms on file for two years. That actually catches some people by surprise that have kind of forgotten all about it by the time we get back to them. But it's really just kind of a past-practice thing, and it's a question of the volume of applications and, and how much the commission would have to be acting on them.
Yes.
And some people decide that they would like to do something else, even though they have an old expression of interest form on file with us, so there've been occasions when we've appointed somebody and they really didn't want that spot. So I think in my experience, what I've found is that most of the advisory boards have some kind of staff monitoring or relationship, and they file annual reports on your behalf, and it's not until those annual reports are filed that we find out, or that the clerk finds out that there are vacancies on the boards. So I've been trying to work towards a more timely notification of the city commission when there is a vacancy, and I think we're doing better at that, but.
Apparently, you're doing mine tonight, so.
We missed you, and we got to you.
I missed you. It wasn't, you didn't miss me. I do have one other question, if I could. Is there a reason that there's a limitation, like solid waste meets quarterly, for instance? It's a quarterly thing, it's not every month. Is there some reason that you can only be a member of one board or advisory panel?
I personally hate the answer, because that's the way we've always done it. But in some respects, it, that's been past-practice on the expectation that, you know, you wanted to give people opportunities. We are struggling to fill vacancies at the moment. I can't, I assume in the past that there might have been a greater participation rate.
Apparently, I can't keep track of what I'm doing on this one, so I'm, I just noticed that, I know that some other people have asked me, since this is just quarterly, why, why couldn't you serve on another panel?
Well, I think honestly, many of the positions are filled, it weren't a couple years ago. There were a lot of vacancies, in my opinion. Now we have a problem with the youth vacancies, and I wish that we could access those, and then those advisory positions, like the building advisory that requires some background.
Yes, sir.
Those are a little tougher. But most of the, those that are offered just to the public at large were, were getting close.
I got involved in this because my daughter was a youth member of the Human Relations Commission. Started when she was in school, and she became an adult member, and I have to say, I encourage my kids to be involved, and then, so my daughter had the gall to ask me, what are you doing, Dad? So I chose this one because there was an opening and it met quarterly. I'm not gonna kid, but it's, it's very interesting, and I appreciate you taking the time, and I really appreciate staff time, because I don't, I think this took more than like a minute and a half to type up, so. I was, when Jim gave it to me, I was like, holy cow, now I feel bad for missing my application deadline, but I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I think you're only asked by statute to meet quarterly, but you could meet more often if you would care.
Yes, we have, actually, we have had other, we voted, had other meetings when, when there was some, some things that were due, like the, the draft for the-
Solid waste.
The state, yeah, the solid waste plan. So we can, and we do, and I think there's always been some discussion on that from, some requests for more information. But thank you again, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Is there a motion?
Mayor Ryan, I move we approve resolution number 18-7644, appointing Mr. Jack Jackson to fill the unexpired term of Ronald Knox to the Solid Waste Management Committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. I believe there's no development business? Other business?
Sorry, but I did, I usually don't have anything, but I do have three things this evening. I'll try to make it real quick. Number one, as part of the interim city manager's report, I provided an update on a couple of dangerous structures and had additional questions. So rather than water torture you with one project at a time, Lauren and her staff were gracious enough to put together a summary of all the dangerous structures and the status of each, so I'll give you a copy of that as you leave. You may already be aware, I think that you are, that a retention study was commissioned for, as it related to the police department in the spring, and I think they started in May. One of the other reasons I was late getting into the city committee, into the study session, was I email, hit send on an email right before I came down of the, the final report, as well as Chief Nelson's communication of that report to the entire police department. So he and I have been in close contact about the report, and how the, trying to be mindful of kind of the public items in the report, and then the personnel-specific items that shouldn't be disclosed. And so we have worked with a consultant in terms of the formatting and getting all that prepared, and then have worked closely with Chief Nelson, just in terms of giving him the opportunity to communicate it to his staff, and he's very committed to taking to heart what's in that report, and he and I will be talking here in the near future in terms of a plan. I don't think there's any expectation in a two-week turnaround time that he has a full-blown plan to respond to all the issues, but he is paying attention to that, and I'll be working with him closely on, on addressing the concerns that are raised in that report. And then lastly, kind of touched on one of the other items, but I did want to bring up, just, as the mayor said, you as a governing body certainly can change your mind, and staff's not taking offense or questioning that. I just want to make sure that we've kind of had a run of different topics where, where revisiting the decision at a, at a much more basic level than we are in the process. And frankly, you know, I'm, as interim, I'm kind of picking up the process, projects that are already underway. There's nothing wrong with that. My question is, should we be staffing these issues differently for you, so that we're having more of that conversation on the front end, and you don't have, find yourself in a, as you phrase it, a commitment bias situation? And some, recycling, we probably weren't all that committed. Overhead structures, we certainly were. The water plant, we certainly were, and for the hyphnium, the third one, there is another example, but it escapes me at the moment. But I think three of those four, we were well into, you know, financial expenditures and commitments, and I just don't want to put you as a governing body in that position if we're staffing that through in some way that's contributing to that.
Well, speaking as someone who's had questions about all those issues, I don't know that I really want to go into it at this point in the evening, but yes, there, I would like the luxury of time, because I think that there are some things that, that I'm not seeing as early in the process as, as I would like to, and I'll be more than happy to delineate that for you, and hopefully work through that. And thank you, I really appreciate you asking about that, because I think that there, there are some things that, to talk about.
I think if we can make progress in that, it's gonna make it easier for you as a governing body, as well as staff, so happy to discuss that.
I have one thing too. I don't know if everybody got their governing magazine, but you might want to, I don't know if everybody's looked at it. Page 62, there's an article back there about recycling and where we're at on that. I think that kind of goes into the discussion we had the other day, and so I think that'll help us as we move forward.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else? Is there a motion adjourned?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Adjourned.